Now we'd like to bring out a couple of our all-time favorites, boys and girls. The drawing is in June fifty-five. Can we make these characters come to life? We need some help from all the kids. We need all the kids right down here on the grass, real quick. Don't be national, right down here, that's it. Nope, gotta get you standing right up. All the kids, come on right down here. We're gonna-
(singing) Get it and shake it off. You do the hokey pokey and you turn yourself around. That's what it's all about. You put your left foot in, you put your left foot out. How do you picture her?
Three shots, three dollars, and I'll call the carry.
Have you had a good picture there?
The rest of our characters are gonna be right up front here. We're gonna keep them right next to everybody. Well, I'm right behind us in place. What you gotta do is you gotta follow with these two police vehicles. Okay? You won't have any problem with all these guys are pretty good at this, that's why they're funny. Alright, that's why they come to this place.
Alright, you guys- Hey, come on to the river, guys!
Hey! Where? Hey!
Best ninety-four.
Alright. Come here, come to the river, best ninety-four.
Anytime.
One, two, three. Come here, guys! Best ninety-four!
Welcome to the nineteen ninety-four-
What year are you in?
Nineteen ninety-three.
Ninety-four?
Oh, for next year?
Yeah.
Alright. Try it again, man. Nineteen ninety-four, Fulton River Fest. Ready? Welcome to the nineteen ninety-four Fulton River Fest.
They're, they're good, guys.
What's my head in the river doing?
My head in the river. What is that, my head job?
My head in the river, perfect. We just did a commercial for you.
What's that?
Okay.
This, this day is-
We all stand?
(inaudible) to the light of the United States of America. The United Republic of America, the one nation, the number one, the individual, the collective, the justice system.
Any changes, additions, or corrections to the agenda card meeting?
I just have one comment. Excuse me, I'm out of breath, running out here. I am wondering why this meeting is at six o'clock. I find it difficult to arrive home from work, prepare for this meeting, and be here at six. Is there any reason for it? Generally, county council meetings are at seven o'clock.
Dr. Council wanted to get his business done, but he's trying to have your reading free for him. If it's not convenient, we can schedule it later, it's a special meeting.
Thank you.
Mayor Fuller? Here. Alderman Blaken?
Here.
Alderman Turemich?
Here.
Alderman Weston?
Here.
Alderman Cavalero?
Here.
Alderman Trowbridge?
Here.
Alderman Allen?
Here.
I'll probably go there. Notation, city clerk was authorized to receive bids on July twenty-sixth up to four P.M. and to publicly open them at four fifteen on July twenty-sixth in the council chambers in municipal buildings. For one new and unused recycling vehicle in accordance with specifications prepared by the engineering department. I received the following bids. First bid was from Labrie, Labrie Equipment, Saint Nichols, Quebec, Canada. Their bid was eighty-seven thousand four hundred and ninety-six dollars with no trade-in allowance. The second bid I received was from Leota Automotive Service, Fulton, New York. Their base bid was one hundred and seventeen thousand nine hundred and twenty dollars with a forty-five hundred dollar trade-in, leaving a net bid of one hundred and thirteen thousand four hundred and twenty dollars. The last bid that I received was from Tracy White GMC Truck Center, East Syracuse, New York. Their bid was one hundred and nine thousand four hundred and sixty-nine dollars under trade-in. They had not applicable with a net bid of one hundred and nine thousand four hundred and sixty-nine dollars. The bids were-
Was that first bid, was that Canadian money or American?
Uh-
Take them?
Yeah. Well, I've got the bid right here, if you'd like to look over it. I believe it was American money, I'm not sure, Jared.
If you don't take the bid, then-
Uh, towards the back.
It doesn't, it doesn't specify. What bothers me is that if you add in the exchange rate, that puts this bid pretty much equal to the other. I mean, and I, I think we need to get that clarified.
Um, the city engineer told me that he would be available for cut, for anyone who would like to ask him about. He has the bid securities and everything with him for any questions in public works committee either after the meeting tonight or tomorrow. Do you want to refer this to the garbage committee?
Yeah, well, I think we need some time to look over these bids, I didn't even see anything.
Okay, the bids will be referred to the garbage committee for their recommendation to return the council at future meeting. Is that the meeting you want? Future meeting of August second, ninety-four. Somebody want to move that?
I'll move it.
Second? Motion's been made in second, it'll be referred to the garbage committee. You all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
Joe, I think we need to get this clarified. I, I can call this person tomorrow, or you can, whatever. I think we need a letter from him saying it's American money.
Isn't Canadian dollars less than American dollars? Sign it. Wouldn't eighty-seven thousand Canadian dollars be less than American dollars?
Well, that's, that's what I don't know, and I don't want to-
But it will be the other way though, if I'm supported in Canadian-
Well, then we got a business gap.
Right.
You know, that, that may not be good either. If you give me that before I-
Okay.
I'll, I'll mark it.
Okay. Whereas pursuant to resolution, the council adopted on April nineteenth, the city chairman conveyed to the city of Fulton a tax deed to the following premises, state of eighty-one kid to eight, to O.A.D. S Broadway. Whereas the deed to the city of Fulton was dated April twenty-fifth, and recorded in the municipal county clerk's office on May twenty-third in Book twelve fifty of deeds at page forty M.C. Whereas a common council has discerned that it is in the best interest of the city of Fulton that property be sold at public auction to the highest responsible bidder, said auction to be conducted as part of the common council meeting of September sixth, nineteen ninety-four. Therefore, be resolved, city clerk was authorized, directed to advertise in the official city newspaper the following. The clerk will conduct a public auction, the sale of the above described premises. Said public auction to be conducted on Tuesday, September sixth, at seven P.M. The common council chambers, and the said common council does hereby set a minimum bid of twenty thousand dollars. That the successful bidder shall make a minimum deposit of ten percent of the bid at the time and place of the public auction, with the balance to be paid in the city clerk, to the city clerk counter before September fifteenth in default, of which the deposit will be forfeited. And that the successful bidder shall receive a quick claim deed from the city of Fulton at a time and a place of delivery of the total purchase price. The city of Fulton reserves the right to reject all bids at the auction. A survey of the premises, that is, the subject of this resolution was prepared by Robert Burley dated June fifteenth, and a copy of said survey is available for inspection at the office of the city clerk. Somebody want to move that?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carried. Pursuant to resolution, the council adopted that April nineteenth, city chairman conveyed the city of Fulton a tax deed for the following premises, Marie Bosensky, Seward Street. Now therefore be resolved, clerk is hereby authorized, directed to advertise in official city newspaper. The city clerk will conduct a public auction, the sale of the above described premises, to conduct, conducted on September sixth, nineteen ninety-four, at seven P.M. in council chambers. And the council does hereby set a minimum bid of seven thousand dollars, and the successful bidder shall make a minimum deposit of ten percent of the bid at the time and place at the public auction, with the balance to be paid to the city clerk counter before September fifteenth, in default of which the deposit will be forfeited. Successful bidder shall receive a quick claim deed from the city of Fulton at time and place of delivery of the total purchase price. City of Fulton reserves the right to reject all bids at the auction. Survey of the premises was made by Mr. Burley dated June third. A copy of the survey is available for inspection at the office of the city clerk. Somebody want to move that? Move that. Second?
Second.
On the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. So, the minutes of common council meetings held on June twenty-eighth, July fifth, and July eleventh, nineteen ninety-four hereby approved.
I'll move it. Second?
On the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Result, city clerks report receipts and disbursements for the month of June in the amount of five thousand six hundred and thirty-two dollars twenty-eight cents is hereby received, approved and placed on file.
I'll move it.
On the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Result, the schedule of bills payable sixty-one through sixty-four, nineteen ninety-four, which has been previously approved by the common council auditing committee are hereby approved.
I'll move it.
I'll second. In the future, I'd like to see if it's possible exactly what we're approving here. It's been previously approved by the auditing committee, it says items sixty-one through sixty-four. If possible, I'd like to see these items here. It's hard to approve something if you don't know what you're approving.
Any other comments? On the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, which you may- Result, following claims against the city of Fulton referred to our city attorney. Someone's with notice submitted by Judy Clark, behalf of her son Timothy Clark, for injuries alleged to have occurred when he fell at Hewlett Park. Letter of claim submitted by Angela Fiori for injuries alleged to have occurred in June twenty-second while playing softball at Dennis A. Field. Letter of claim submitted by Jeffrey Burridge for damages to his vehicle alleged to have occurred on July thirteenth when he hit a storm drainpipe near five-eleven Seward Street. Objection to tentative railroad ceiling for assessing units submitted by Conrail. Someone's with notice submitted by Melissa Cook for injuries alleged to have occurred on June eighteenth and on, and around October sixteenth when she fell downstairs located at two sixty-six West Second Street. Notice of petition submitted by Empire Vision to reduce assessment valuation for tax year ninety-four and ninety-five. Notice of petition submitted by Eastlake Apartments to reduce assessment value of real property tax for year ninety-four and ninety-five. Notice of petition submitted by KBC Stores to reduce assessed valuation for real property for tax year ninety-four and ninety-five. Notice from Small Claims Court regarding a claim submitted by Lawrence Bennerick for damages at one dash three Austin Ave alleged to have occurred on or about the end of February nineteen ninety-four due to a main sewer break. Somebody want to offer that?
I'll move it.
Second? On the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Whereas due to economic hardship, the common council has analyzed certain positions within the city that determine the feasibility of abolition of said positions. And whereas the abolition of certain positions within the city will contribute toward the efforts of this common council to resolve the city's economic problems. Whereas the common council finds that the abolition of position hereinafter enumerated will save the city approximately, approximately sixty thousand dollars per year in salary-infringed benefits. Now therefore be it resolved, council does hereby abass the following position effective August twenty-seventh, nineteen ninety-four. City engineer. And be it further resolved that the employee affected by this abolition of position shall retain the right of reinstatement to the extent provided in Section Eight Civil Service Law and any other applicable laws, rules, and regulations. Be it further resolved that the employee affected by this abolition of position shall receive all compensation and fringe benefits due in accordance with state law and any applicable collective bargaining agreements. Be it further resolved that the municipal civil service commission is hereby authorized and directed to comply with any and all applicable laws, rules, and regulations of the state of local civil service law, rules, and regulations, and place the name of said employee affected by the abolition of position on a preferred list as required by civil service law, and to take any other action which is necessary and proper. Somebody want to offer that?
I'll move it.
Somebody want a second?
I'll second for discussion. I was unaware that this item was on the agenda tonight, and I spent my Saturday reviewing the code enforcement proposal. I'd just like to have all our ducks in order here. I saw some questions in that proposal, and I see no value of doing this particular act without making sure we have exactly what we want.
Did we, did you second that, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, I did.
Aside from the cost-saving aspect of this, how wise did you do away with city engineer? I mean, who are you gonna have to replace him? Why would we have a city engineer if we didn't need him?
Okay, uh, most, most of the engineering work that is done in this city is done by outside contractors.
He doesn't do any of these-
An awful lot of the work, a very, very high percentage of the work is done by outside contractors. You really have very few capital projects going on that require the services of an engineer. Most of the work that is completed by the city is done by the DPW. They, they don't use the engineering services. The water commissioner, the sewer commissioner, they know how to lay water lines and sewer lines. In the discussion of this, of this issue, the council, I believe, took a very pragmatic, sensitive, and sensible approach in taking a look at what jobs they might eliminate while not affecting the services of the community.
I don't understand why. We've had a city engineer for I don't know how long, so, like you're saying, all these years, we shouldn't have had him?
No, we've had a city engineer somewhere around two years.
Well, I don't think so.
It's true.
No, because he passed, didn't ring his name, Water Commissioner. Before the-
Well, no, Sam Bateman-
John would know.
I had city engineer.
Yeah, he was. He served in both capacities.
So, I mean, he served-
He served in both capacities. I don't know what the timeframe was, but I remember an administration that did not use a city engineer, used contractor. And I'm not sure what the timeframe was. If, if this, if it's found that this job is needed, it can be replaced by a resolution.
I'm just curious why you at this time decided to do away with it as a unit.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Roll call vote, please.
Roll call vote. Alderman Lincoln?
No.
Alderman Turemich?
No.
Alderman Weston?
Yes.
Alderman Cavalero?
Yes.
Alderman Trowbridge?
Yes.
Alderman Allen?
Yes.
Motion's carried. Whereas a meeting the council held on July twenty-first, in nineteen eighty-seven, a resolution was passed allowing vendors, vendor wares, fizenwares in the area known as Bullhead Point, subject to vendors' license, obtaining a license from the city clerk's office, and subject to approval of the council. Whereas Lenore Hoxey of County Route Three, Fulton, New York, has applied for a vendor's license to sell farm produce from August eighteenth, and ninety-fourth to August eighteenth, ninety-five, at said Bullhead Point. Be resolved, the council hereby approves the application for a vendor's license by Lenore Hoxey and directs the city clerk to issue the license in accordance with requirements of Fulton City Code. Somebody want to offer that?
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Before we vote on this? Is there anybody from the city of Fulton that's going out to Bullhead Point to make sure that everybody who's selling their wares out there has a permit from the city of Fulton?
Would that come under the relevant police block? They just go up there and-
They could, they have the right to ask. I just don't know that they, that they do or don't do that. I have to assume that something is down the police. Someone want to move that?
I'll move it.
I'll second it.
On the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. City, whereas the city of Fulton community development agency solicited proposals from several architects, engineers for design services in conjunction with the Indian Point Landing Project. Whereas three firms responded with proposals ranging from five thousand eight hundred and twenty-five dollars- reflects part of the city's required cash in-kind services match of one hundred thousand one hundred and thirteen dollars in project costs, with the ISTA, ISDEA enhancement grant funds amount of one thousand nine hundred and sixty-three dollars to fund improvements which all, which will include parking, facility lighting, signage, plantings, benches, walkway, and bolt launching improvements. Somebody want to move that?
I'll move it.
Second?
Second. On the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
So, could I, is that first one? I'm opposed, second word also?
Second word, this proposal came forward two weeks ago when I was against spending for this particular project and again tonight.
Is this included in the thirty-five thousand budget during this addition?
No, that's part of the city share.
Was this known in the time of the budget period prior to fourteen over the required amount?
I'm sorry, I can't answer that. I don't, I don't know one man knowledge. Second, second word is- No. Uh, motion, carry. Whereas Fulton community development agency received a proposal from Tony Cots Associates for the design services in conjunction with Oak Path Trail Projects. Be resolved, mayor be authorized to execute a contract with Cots and Associates for design services at a cost not to exceed five thousand dollars, reflecting city cash contribution required in support of thirty-nine thousand dollars total project cost, with remainder to be provided by grant funding from the New York State Canal Corporation. Somebody want to move that?
I'll second it.
On the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed. This is another project that is worthwhile and ideal, but again, we're spending money. Any opposed?
Notation that the city clerk has advised the council at this meeting of July twenty-sixth, the proper letter of disclosure pursuant to Section eight oh-three of general municipal law has been filed with him by the following employee, and the said disclosure is entered in the minutes of this council meeting of July twenty-sixth as a matter of record, Wayne Newton of Fulton Fire Department, selling fire extinguishing equipment. A resolution authorizing the issuance of four hundred and twelve thousand five hundred dollar serial bonds of the city of Fulton, Swiggle County, New York, to pay all or part of the costs of various capital projects and enforce said city. Means there are bond anticipation notes for various purchases that the city has made or is proposing to make. Sir? The design services of that parterry.
Probably one question, but did you ask anybody else with this?
Uh, no.
On number thirteen, are these bullshit items?
Yes, a lot of them are.
A lot of them are. Could you tell me which ones are not? Could you tell me which ones are not?
I don't have your listing front view.
New facilities at Indian Point, Backhoe. There's a Backhoe, there's new facilities at Indian Point, there's Canal Park Parkway, North Bay Campground, the recycling packages for the Packer Vehicle, which happens to be the same item that you listed in this for on number one. Which of these, do you know which one are budgeted?
Yes, I'll answer you directly. North Bay Campground is in the existing budget for a bond anticipation note. The other two items were programs that were applied for by previous administrations that didn't bother to fund them or provide any way of funding them, and they're approved now. The walkway and the canal improvement. The Packer was part of the new garbage plan, and it was always anticipated that that would be paid for by bond anticipation.
Is that outside of item number one, which you listed for? Or is that the same item?
Yes, the same item.
The items at Indian Point were budgeted back?
No, they, the previous council never bothered to budget that.
Will any of the items, yeah, this portion, this construction, this story, they didn't get 20, will any of that be paid for with $35,000, $120,000, which you're paying towards that project?
That's what that is, I'm pretty sure. You're asking me, is that the $35,000?
Approximately a month ago, the budget was $35,000.
That's what this is.
Then number six, today, is 27.
That's a maximum number.
And two of those items too, like the Backhoe and the hazardous material and Skuba equipment, those were passed before by resolution, we're just providing the funding for them.
Mayor, I do have a question. Could you explain a little bit about the reconstruction of the water wells at Great Bear? I've been on vacation, I haven't been able to get ahold of you. And can you tell us, within this package, is there a time constraint where we can get out of this if we need more information? That is the only thing that I am not sure of at this time, and I'd like some further discussion on.
This resolution would allow you to issue those bonds. It isn't necessarily mandatory that you issue bonds, it allows you to issue the bond. The money for the wells, reconstruction of wells. There are two wells which need reconstruction at Great Bear Farm. The water people tell us that they're 90 percent, they're about 90 percent sure that these are known as replacement wells. And on these replacement wells, they feel that there's about a 90 percent certainty that they will be able to expand the water flow in those wells, which will generate us about $60,000 a year total. The third well, which is a new well, is a gamble. If the well is hit, it would generate a minimum of about $40,000 a year, and there's a great deal of geological evidence that it can be hit. If the third well is not hit, you will only need about $20,000 to explore for the well not afforded.
I had asked for some backup on this information before. I wasn't sure whether we were talking, there was some damage to the wells, and I don't have the proper backup right now. How many days would I have?
Are you saying you'd like to?
Well, I don't know if I have to pull the whole thing or pull this portion. It sounds like a package, so I would ask, if we don't have any problem with any late payments, if we could pull it to the August 2nd meeting until we won't run into any late charges?
You want to amend this resolution?
I would like to.
Well, you put the whole thing off.
Okay, I mean...
One week isn't going to matter.
Okay, I feel comfortable with that.
Want to postpone?
Sure.
City clerk is hereby authorized and directed to advertise for a public hearing relative to proposed ordinance for the unsafe building ordinance. It's been revised. I need a date that you'd like to... I can't do it August 2nd, I don't have enough time. Would you want to wait until, cause special meeting to hold this, or would you like to hold it off till September 6th is our first meeting? September 6th. September 6th, 1994.
Somebody want to move that? Mr. Allen?
I'll second it.
On the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
Resolved that the appointment by Mayor Bullard of Rosemary Dollberg, 28 North Pollard, Fulton, New York, to Fulton Library Board to fill the unexpired term of David Ritchie effective immediately, expired December 31st, 1997, is hereby approved.
I'll move it.
Second?
Second.
On the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
Was there a reason why Mr. Ritchie gave up his term, the offer of resignation?
Said he was working part-time, and he said that he just didn't have the time to make the meeting. We dropped your first name.
Notation that the appointment by Mayor Bullard of Michael Hogan, 808 West 3rd Street, Fulton, New York, to Fulton Housing Authority, effective immediately and expired January 15th, 1999, is hereby entered in the minutes of this meeting of July 26th as a matter of record.
I'll move it.
There's no vote on that?
No vote on that?
Good odds in notation.
But it was a good choice, right?
See, that's my neighbor.
Mike was a good choice.
Notation that the appointment by Mayor Bullard of John Johnson, 706 Highland Street, to the Civil Service Commission to fill the unexpired term of Jack Krego Sr., effective immediately and to expire May 31st, 1998, is hereby entered into the minutes of this meeting, July 26th, as a matter of record. Resolved, the police department is hereby directed to conduct a traffic study on South 2nd Street in the area of 161-163 South 2nd Street, focusing on ingress, egress problems, sightlines, potential snow accumulation, et cetera, in anticipation of future development of said property.
I'll move that.
On the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
Result, the city chamberlain is hereby authorized and directed to transfer the funds as follows. $150 from the A1990 contingent account to the A3620 Building Zoning and Handicap Account to secure the building on 6th and Seneca Streets. $2,000 from the contingent account into the A3620.47 Building Zoning Handicap Inspector Account for mowing properties in violation of the weed ordinance.
These are all transfers that are billed back to the real property when we have to do the work. Somebody want to offer that?
I'll move it.
Any want to second that?
I'll second it.
On the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
Whereas Chapter 4 of the city code entitled "City-Owned Real Estate Governance of Sale and Disposition of Real Property Owned by the City of Fulton," whereas Section 4-3 reads in part as follows. Nowwithstanding provisions of Subdivision 2 of subsection 23 of the general city law, of any special act, local law, or charter, real property owned by the city which is not needed for a public or municipal purpose may be leased or sold at public sale or by private sale. In the event that the common council determines that a private sale would be in the best interest of the city, then a resolution shall be passed by a vote of at least three-fourths of all members of the common council stating that the private sale is determined to be in the best interest of the city, the real property which is subject of the sale has no viable public purpose or municipal purpose. Whereas the city has received an offer to purchase from Pathfinder Industries, Inc., for the purchase of a vacant real property owned by the city of Fulton, situated on the southwest corner of Ontario Street and North Forest Street, consisting of 35,203 square feet and with 197.32 foot frontage on North Forest Street and 222.97 foot frontage on Ontario Street. Whereas the set offer is for $25,000 cash and is contingent on the purchaser committing to erect an expansion of his existing manufacturing plant on the site. Now therefore be resolved, the council does find that the real property that is subject of the sale has no viable public purpose or municipal purpose, that private sale to Pathfinder Industries, Inc., is in the best interest of the city of Fulton. And as further resolved, that the mayor is hereby authorized and directed to accept the offer to purchase from Pathfinder Industries, Inc., in the amount of $25,000.
Somebody want to offer that? Mr. Allen?
I'll second it.
Mr. Lynn? I think it's obvious that the council wants to work with industries that want to expand. On the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
Result, the city chamberlain is hereby authorized and directed to establish a petty cash funding amount of $50 to be used at North Bay.
I'll move it.
I'll second it.
On the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
Result, city clerk be authorized and directed to advertise for a public hearing to be held relative to a proposed local law which would amend Section 240 of Title 14 of the city charter presently reserved to be entitled payment of taxes. I would assume you'd want to put September 6th again in that one, Chair? The public hearing will be for September 6th, 7:00 p.m.
Somebody want to move that? Pardon me.
I'll move it.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
Whereas an anticipated vacancy has occurred in the fire department with the resignation of firefighter Anthony Squiteri effective September 10th, 1994. Whereas the next session of the fire academy will start on August 15th. Whereas if the vacancy is not filled until September, the chosen candidate will have to wait until next year to attend said fire academy to be certified. Whereas a temporary appointment would result in a cost savings in as much as the chosen firefighter will be able to join the fire department fully trained when vacancy occurs. Now therefore be resolved that the common council authorize a seven-week temporary position of firefighter to enable the fire and police commission to make a selection prior to the start of the fire academy.
I'll move that.
I might add that this position will save the city a lot of money in overtime. Okay, if it wasn't filled, then we'd have to cover with overtime, and those costs would be very prohibitive. I'll second it.
I'd like to make a comment on that. I thought also that there was an opening coming up January 1st, and we were to consider the approval of another firefighter also to attend this.
I was told that, but I was surprised that the resolution only included one, and my thinking at the last minute was that you would maybe want to do that on August 2nd.
I have a question or two here. Why is this resolution warranted anticipated vacancy? Is there a vacancy or...
Resigning effective September 10th.
Okay. Next question would be, is there an existing list that we're going to appoint a temporary from?
The Foreign Police Commission.
Off the...
Off the list.
Off the list? And will that individual be required to reside in the city at the time of appointment?
Well, that's the question, Jim. I mean, if he has to reside at the time of appointment for the day after he goes off, that's the problem. At the time of appointment, yes, he has to be a resident.
Doesn't that read that he has to be a registered voter of the city of Fulton? Not only resigned, am I wrong in that?
He has to be a resident. A resident is a very big...
How do we prove residency?
Well, I saw that's a process.
I guess that would be, if you're a registered voter, to me, that would prove residency if you're in Fulton, not if you live at somebody's house and you're a registered voter somewhere else. That would prove that you're a resident somewhere else. Follow what I'm saying? That means you're not resident in Fulton. And if anybody should appoint it to the fire department, it should be a resident, registered voter of the city of Fulton. And that's all I have to say.
We have a motion and a second. Pardon me. On the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
The next item on the agenda is the annexation. We put it down for discussion. I have to apologize because there's an attorney from the Grossman Law Firm who's representing the city, and I told her to be here at 7 o'clock because that's when I thought of being on. She's also going to be here next week, or Mr. Dwyer will be here next week. What she was going to come down tonight and just talk to you briefly about was the draft environmental impact statement that you all received over the weekend. She was... What the agenda is at this point is you're going to review that. You have a week to review it, and then next week, on the agenda, there'll be a resolution to open what they call a public comment period, which is a 30-day period when any interested party can make comments, and there'll be an address where they send their comments to. Obviously, what that is, is for people from Valney to register their comments. Now, there won't be any public hearings within that 30-day period. It's a matter simply of writing down their feeling, their opinion, and sending them in. That 30-day period will expire with our first meeting in September. At that point, there'll be another resolution to proceed further with the annexation process. If any of the aldermen have any questions or want to say anything about the impact statement, they should probably be prepared next week, or then you have that 30 days also. If there's anything you think should be added to it, whatever's in that study is eventually when it's up in court, so it's important that whatever's in there be accurate and also be totally comprehensive. If you notice, they did put in the fact that the council passed a resolution, in fact, they passed two, to offer Valney the tax money that they would be losing. The reason we passed those resolutions was to put them in the study to show that Valney does not have an economic loss by permitting the annexation. I don't see if you have any questions now.
Anybody on the council have any other business?
I'd just like to make a comment on one of the members of the Finance and Audit Committee, which is chaired by Alderman Kathy Trowbridge and Alderman Tim Allen, who's also on it. Just like the rest of the aldermen to be aware of it, at any time, I'm sure they can make arrangements with Jim LaBota to review any of the bills that have been approved by the Finance and Audit Committee. It's always open and available to you.
What I was referring to, Joe, was just a simple tabulation of what those bills were.
That's fine, we will get that for you.
I imagine you would find it difficult to give your approval if you didn't know what you're approving.
Well, that's why I say it's available to you.
Yeah, and we will get it to you every meeting.
Thank you.
I'll see if any business.
I do, Your Honor. It was brought to my attention today that two people from the DPW department were driving equipment out of their classification without a direct license from the state of New York, a Class 3. They were operating the equipment that they shouldn't have been operating, and that's kind of a bad thing to do with insurance purposes and everything else like that.
Do you have the names of those people? Okay, if you give me the names and the date that it happened, it's on, I'll look into it. Anyone else? Pretty in the audience, any business with this?
I'd like to make a quick comment. I don't know if anyone's driven down by the DPW, but I would imagine the DPW people are very proud of it, and it looks wonderful. They cleaned it up, they painted it. I think it looks pretty, but everyone might think it... I'm very proud of what they've done, they put a lot of extra time in, they've worked really hard, and I think... They put a lot of extra time in, they've worked really hard and I think they're feeling proud and I just wanted to let them know that I think the city really appreciates it. I know I do.
You can, your motion do adjourn?
I'll make, um, make a motion. I'll move it.
Somebody want to second that?
Second.
And the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
You're in. If you weren't, you weren't in bed.
You're right, it's a little bit likely. Like what we did, it's still a light in the United States of America and this is a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, with liberty and justice for all.
I have one, ma'am. I'd like to make a motion that we repeal the resolution that abolished the city engineer due to economic hard times.
I'll second that.
Do you want that added to the agenda?
It is a motion, yes.
You're, you're making the motion?
Yes.
Resolve that the resolution which was adopted on July twenty-eighth, nineteen ninety-four in which the abolishment of city engineer's job was passed is hereby rescinded in its entirety.
Excuse me, does that motion open for public discussion before you vote? Thank you.
What concerns me is two issues. Number one, I'd like some reasons as to why you were looking to eliminate that position where I see further on down, you're looking to appoint another individual. Is that individual going to be working for free? Or was this elimination of a position to create funding to hire another individual?
I'd like to answer it. In, in my opinion, it was to, to face the changing needs in the city. We felt that we did not need a city engineer as much as we needed some direction on code enforcement.
Are you well aware of the fact that your licensed professional city engineer is more qualified than a code enforcement officer? Or would you say that a licensed professional state of New York engineer is not qualified, yet a hourly trained code enforcement officer is therefore more qualified? Or my understanding was that this was strictly being done for financial reasons only. If you're saying that that's not the case, then obviously the engineer was not doing his job properly or you were looking to eliminate his position just to create another position, which is not fair to the city, nor is it fair to the city engineer, nor is it fair to the residents of this city. And I would like that addressed as to valid reasons, not changing needs. What's a changing need in a city? Define that.
Well, we didn't feel we needed the engineer services.
Why is that? That, that's what I'm saying. You can arbitrarily sit there and tell the public anything you want to tell the public. What I'm asking for is you made a vote, you made a decision based on facts. If you didn't make it based on facts, then it was made based on, on either a conflict with the existing engineer, which my understanding was that wasn't the case. And I just would like some facts as to why that decision was made. Obviously, if you can't address factual issues, then you either should not have voted for it, or you can just tell me you just don't like the guy, so you voted to eliminate his position and create a position for somebody you do like. So I ask the question again, from a factual standpoint, why was that position eliminated?
Factual standpoint is it was economically eliminated.
If that's the case, why are we looking to hire another individual to do that same particular job or who will be doing the engineering services for the city?
There will be no engineering services done under the proposed chapter.
I, I implore this council to rethink your position. If you actually believe that a municipality can run without licensed professional engineering services, you're well, well mistaken. If you're doing this to create money to allow another individual to do your code enforcement, I, I think that's a real lame reason for doing it. Thank you for your time.
I'll, I'll address that too. This was done as a matter of priority and number one, code enforcement has been something that the council's been working on since day one. The timing on this may be not exactly what we would prefer. It's an ongoing thing, it's something we've been looking at and looking at to make a change, to have a better place, a better place for Fulton. An engineering position, the engineering department, we had, I felt that at different times, the city has not had an engineer. They had, they had a period of time, and I'm not sure the timeframe on this, but they went without an engineering for, uh, engineer in the department for economic reasons. They decided to subcontract it out. At another timeframe, the next administration said, well, maybe we're spending too much money on subcontract and maybe want to do it another way. Let's hire an engineer. And at different times, they've hired engineers, they've hired engineers that were not, they've hired engineers that were chemical engineers, electrical engineers, not necessarily the type engineer that was needed. So we felt, I felt, and some of the members of the council, at this time, the priority would be that we would do without the engineer. As far as the timeframe on the code enforcement officer, that was something that we were looking at since January.
First and foremost, you people are missing the point of codes. Code enforcement is not beautification. Code enforcement is public safety. Get that right out of your head if you think it's to beautify your city. It is to provide safety for the residents of the city and nothing else. That's why you have codes. You don't have codes for beautification issues, you have codes for safety reasons. When I hear everybody telling me about cleaning up the city, that is not code enforcement, that's beautification. If you want to hire a beautification engineer, then go hire a beautification engineer. In regards to your comments, I see here you've already pre-appointed or going to appoint based on a vote here, a Mr. Daniel Vaughn. Is Mr. Vaughn a resident of the city of Fulton? If not so, do you have a copy available for the public of Mr. Vaughn's credentials to be this chief code enforcement officer? And thirdly, who is doing that job for the city currently and will their position be abolished?
Why, why don't, why don't we wait until that item comes up before?
Will I be allowed to speak at that issue? Thank you.
I would just add one thing in addressing, Bob. If in fact the council members felt that we do not need a city engineer, we do need code enforcement, why then is not the resolution stated that way? It reads to me, due to economic hardship, certain positions within the city have been analyzed. My question to Bob, who among us analyzed these positions? I certainly have not partaken, partaken in any analytical study of positions. I, I'm not in agreement with the wording of this resolution. I might add, the first time I laid eyes on this resolution was after the council meeting due to being added to the agenda rather late.
Jim, you're referring to what resolution? Which one?
Resolution to abolish city engineer.
Roll call vote please, Mr. Chief. Alderman Lincoln? Yes. Alderman Teramiji? Yes. Alderman Weston? No. Alderman Cavallaro? No. Alderman Trowbridge? No. Alderman Allen? No. Our motion is defeated, Your Honor. Please call the roll now. Alderman Lincoln? Here. Alderman Teramiji? Here. Alderman Weston? Here. Alderman Cavallaro? Here. Alderman Trowbridge? Here. Alderman Allen? Here. Mayor Bullard? Here. Our present, Your Honor. Can you read the first item on the agenda? Whereas pursuant to the New York Municipal Annexation Law, General Municipal Law, Article seventeen, Pierce Drive Development and New York Partnership, Larry E. Rowley, Bruce N. Clark, Susan P. Rowley and Wildwater's Pierce Drive Associates petitioners filed petition on or about November eighteenth, nineteen ninety-three, with the city clerk of the city of Fulton and the town clerk of the town of Valney seeking to annex premises therein described into the city of Fulton. Whereas Municipal Annexation Law requires the governing body of each affected local government to determine by majority vote whether to approve or disapprove the proposed annexation under certain conditions and such a determination is an action requiring compliance with the State Environmental Quality Review Act. Whereas the common council acting as lead agency pursuant to SECPRA by a resolution dated February fifteenth, nineteen ninety-four made a determination of significance, authorized the filing of a SECPRA positive declaration and directed the preparation of a draft environmental impact statement for the action involving the proposed annexation. Whereas Wildwater's Pierce Drive Associates sought approvals for construction of a shopping center on the premises proposed for annexation known as the River Glen Mall of the town of Valney, which was reviewed by the town of Valney as follows by the issuance of SECPRA negative declaration by the town of Valney Planning Board on April twenty-first, nineteen ninety-two, by approval of rezoning of the subject premises by the town of Valney Town Board to convenience business B dash one district on May fourteenth, nineteen ninety-two, by final site plan approval by the town of Valney Planning Board on June sixteenth, nineteen ninety-two, by the issuance of a building permit by the town of Valney zoning enforcement officer on July twelfth, nineteen ninety-three. In further construction of said River, River Glen Mall Shopping Center has been commenced and is about to begin operation. Whereas a joint public hearing under the Municipal Annexation Law was conducted by the Town Board of the town of Valney in this common council on January twentieth, nineteen ninety-four concerning the proposed annexation in a SECPRA full environmental assessment form, filed with, with a petition for annexation. Whereas both the Town Board of Valney and this common council were required to conduct coordinated review of the proposed unlisted action of the annexation. Whereas the town of Valney made a determination of significance and issued a SECPRA positive declaration dated February tenth, nineteen ninety-four. Where some furtherance of the positive declaration issued by this common council on February fifteenth, nineteen ninety-four, public scoping has been accomplished and a draft has been prepared, distributed to members of this council and the mayor for their reviews. Whereas SECPRA requires the preparation and filing of a notice of completion after a lead agency has determined a draft EIS is adequate for public review. Whereas a public hearing has already been conducted on January twentieth, nineteen ninety-four and a petition for annexation in accordance with the Municipal Annexation Law. Public scoping has been conducted and the nature of the comments received at both the annexation public hearing and in public scoping are somewhat similar and have been addressed in this subject draft EIS and it appeared that a public hearing is not required under the circumstances. Now therefore be it resolved that the draft EIS, including exhibits A through N, is hereby found acceptable pursuant to six NYCRR six seventeen point eight for purpose of public review and comment and be it further resolved, this council as lead agency shall receive written public comment until and including September sixth, nineteen ninety-four. Be it further resolved that the mayor or city attorney shall cause to be filed a notice of completion of draft environmental impact statement in the form attached and distributed same along with a copy of the draft EIS according to law and be it further resolved that at the conclusion of the comment period established herein, a final environmental impact statement shall be prepared according to six NYCRR six seventeen point fifteen. I, and all substantive comments received and their source shall be identified and responded to in writing and submitted to the common council as lead agency for consideration and acceptance and filing according to law. Be it further resolved that the mayor and/or city attorney shall take such other additional action as may be necessary to further the intent of this resolution and that this resolution shall take effect immediately.
I'll move it.
I'll second it.
Yes. Alderman Teramiji? Yes. Alderman Weston? Yes. Alderman Cavallaro? Yes. Alderman Trowbridge? Yes. Alderman Allen? Motion is carried, Your Honor. Donald, approving this, what does, where does that leave us now in this process? My understanding, would you rather talk about that, Mr. Dwyer? I don't want to steal this.
Hi, I'm Jim Dwyer, counsel for the common council concerning the annexation of the premises in question. This is one of the procedural steps in the State Environmental Quality Review Act process. It establishes a comment period in which written comments will be received on the draft environmental impact statement, which is available here with the city clerk through and including September sixth, nineteen ninety-four. After that, the common council as lead agency has a maximum of forty-five days to prepare a final environmental impact statement. What a final environmental impact statement is, that any substantive comments that are received in the course of the comment period, they must be responded to and addressed and put together. And then the entire packet, the draft environmental impact statement, the substantive comments and the responses are then submitted to the common council for determination whether it is complete at that time. That would be, I would say, in late September, early October timeframe. And then once that is determined complete, again, a resolution is enacted accordingly, a notice is filed and disseminated and between ten and thirty days thereafter, the common council will conclude the secret process with the filing of what is known as a finding statement, which says they'll either go forward with the annexation or not, and they'll take a vote at that time if they decide to go forward relative to the annexation. Then there's already a stipulation in file between the city and the town of Valney that states that the required period under the municipal annexation states that the required period under the municipal annexation law to make a decision on annexation would be extended so that the seeker requirements are complied with. In other words, the municipal annexation law has certain timelines, and when it was enacted, it didn't consider the seeker timelines. So we entered into a stipulation that would allow this so that the environmental assessment could be concluded and a decision thereafter made. The town of Valney will have to also at that time make a decision.
So, when does this go to court? And how do they make a decision? That's the question.
Well, what happens is, when you say, "When does it go to court?", hopefully there'll be a decision that will be unanimous in this particular matter. But if it is not unanimous, then the party that votes in favor, that can bring a special proceeding in Article seventy-eight in the appellate division, which is quite complicated, it's then referred to a three-person panel, including a judge of the Supreme Court to make a recommendation, the appellate division. And that argument is essentially a measure of benefit to each of the municipalities involved as to who receives the most benefit from the annexation, and also measuring the benefit to the property in the event annexation goes through or it doesn't.
A year from now, will I be asking Donald? So where are we in the process?
You will know. You will know a year from now, and you will know relative to a conclusion of any litigation in this matter, I would say, in six months, if it's necessary. Hopefully it will not be.
Resolved that the minutes of the common council meeting held on July twenty-sixth, nineteen ninety-four are hereby approved.
I'll move it.
Second.
And the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
Resolved that the filing claims against the city of Fulton are referred to our city attorney for his action. Notice of petition submitted by Nestle Food Company for review of real property assessments. Someone submitted by Brian Campbell for damages alleged to have occurred as a result of the police investigation. Letter of claim submitted by Casey L. Avarel for injuries alleged to have occurred on July fifteenth when she fell from the top of a slide at Lincoln Park. Notice petition submitted by Tops Market for review of assessment for certain real properties known as twelve West First Street for tax year ninety-four, ninety-five.
I'll move it.
Second.
I have just a question for council. Last week, we had Empire Vision, Eastlake, and KBC go through this process, and tonight we have two more. Is this customary each year? And what is the process that we undertake?
For the past several years, a lot of the major businesses or industries have filed. It's called a sursurary proceeding. The process actually starts in May. They have what's called a grievance day, where any taxpayer, any person owns property can come to an order of assessment review and file a grievance. The grievance committee looks at that material at that time. They have basically till the end of June to make a decision. If anyone wants to challenge the ward's decision, they have to file a sursurary proceeding during the month of July. The procedure from this point is that I have to prepare an answer. I have to prepare what's called a bill of particulars. They have to answer that. It basically becomes a battle of appraisals. They have to hire an appraiser, and at some point, if we can't negotiate a settlement, they will have, we will have to hire an appraiser. I know in the late eighties, early nineties, Nestle's did get a reduction. I believe Black Boston got a substantial reduction. Silver Rose. See where it got a reduction. And obviously, if you read the newspapers, it's going out in all means of peril. Niagara Mohawk doesn't file anything here yet. I think we're probably the only, one of the few minutes of peril before they have it, which probably means our assessments are too low. That's a very long procedure.
Thank you.
And the motion, Alderman?
We have a motion in a second.
And the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
Resolved that the city of Fulton, subject to the approval of the city, ensure hereby Spencer's River Fest to be held on August twelve, thirteenth, and fourteenth.
Can I ask a question now? Will they be subject to paying a user fee for the Port Memorial and the community center like the people did for Memorial Day weekend, all service and voluntary organizations? Or does this mean that they'll be exempt because it's a city-run activity?
It's an interesting question. I can't answer it.
Because my feeling is, you know, Memorial Day weekend, the good things that the organizations do with that money, I believe that the city should waive those fees, you know, because it comes back into the community. I know I'm involved in Alliance Club, and we do a lot of things with people, and underprivileged people, they have high problems, and that money can go towards that. I just think it's a better way, if we can kind of help those service and voluntary organizations along, as well as the River Fest, then we should exempt them.
We do, I think we do help, and we did make some arrangements this year within the union to reschedule workers with sufficient notice so that we did not have to charge janitorial service. The small fee we ask of them is none of the cost that we really take in electricity, what we do give to these organizations. It's a very, very small, small cost.
Somebody want to offer that?
I did.
Mr. Allen. Give me a second.
Second.
And the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
This is a resolution authorizing the issuance of four hundred and twelve thousand five hundred dollar serial bonds to City Fulton, County Oswego, to pay for all part of the cost of various capital projects in for the City Fulton.
Excuse me, Mayor. Would you think that we'd want to look at item six maybe before item five?
Oh. You had me confused. I'm sorry. What, the statement that's being made is that the next item is included in that bond anticipation note. The next item will determine the final value of what that recycling vehicle cost. The bond anticipation note, you can't borrow more than the vehicle cost. That's just a budget number. Do you want to, do you want to switch it?
No, I don't think Joe had a chance to get that answer that we had asked him. Sorry, Paul.
What answer? That's just a budget number. The number in the resolution is a budget number. You can't, if you buy a truck for a hundred and ten thousand because you set a budget number in bond anticipation of a hundred and twenty-five thousand, you can't borrow a hundred and twenty-five. You don't have to borrow.
Say the amount again. Are the counts in seven oh nine still, or do you read the amount again? Four twelve five or five twelve five? Four twelve five.
I'd like, I'd like to make a comment before we talk about that any further. One of the items on there is the hundred and fifty thousand dollar reconstruction of water wells at Great Bear. Based on some of the council's questions at the last meeting, I would like to suggest that we not include that in as part of the capital projects at this time until the council's had enough time to further look at some options and look at some more details on exactly how that's going to work.
You then want to amend the resolution? Amen to the resolution downward by?
The resolution would then read, Your Honor, two hundred and sixty-two thousand five hundred dollars. Take out a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for that. Two hundred and sixty-two thousand five hundred dollars.
Two sixty-two. Are you offering that amendment, Mr. Weston?
Yes, I'll move that.
I'll second that.
What again was the purpose?
At the last meeting, I know Kathy had a concern as to whether, whether this was the right thing to do at this, at this time. We've had some, some conversations with some people that are familiar with the Great Bear water wells, and we're trying to just get enough information together so that we can determine whether we want to go through with this particular process at all. We, we just need more information, that's all.
And the information packet put together by the water commissioner did not suffice those needs?
Well, that was part of it. It was certainly a very, very thorough packet, but we're still looking at other, other options, other ideas.
On the amendment, please call a roll, Mr. Peter.
First ward?
Yes.
Second ward?
Yes.
Third ward?
Yes.
Fourth ward?
Yes.
Fifth ward?
Yes.
Sixth ward?
Yes.
Motion is carried, Your Honor.
Okay. Now will you do the motion, please? You offered the motion at four hundred and some thousand dollars. Is that not true? No, he didn't. I'm sorry. He didn't make the resolution.
Yes. First meeting of this council?
Point of order, sir. What, what resolution passed?
Well, that's what, that was the confusion.
The amendment.
The amendment.
The amendment, which we took a hundred and fifty thousand dollars and made it two sixty-two five hundred.
So what, let me explain what I thought transpired. I thought that the resolution is offered at the original amount of four, whatever.
Never was.
It was not offered at the time. So Mr. Weston suggested that that resolution be amended to the two sixty-two. So the resolution passed.
Whereas the meeting of this council held on July twenty-sixth, all bids for furnishing the City Fulton DPW with one new and unused recycling vehicle, as accordance with specification, be prepared by the engineering department referred to the public works committee for their review and recommendation to be turned to this council meeting of August second. Whereas per memo dated July twenty-seventh, city engineer Neil Beebe states that the bid submitted by Leota Automotive Services, Inc., meets the technical specifications while the other bids did not. Whereas the committee feels that features of the unit offered by Leota are necessary to the operating plan they devised, and that the necessity of this, necessity of this unit features outweigh the low prices and shorter delivery times of the other bidders. Whereas the council agrees with the recommendation made by the public works committee, therefore be it resolved that the bid for furnishing the City Fulton DPW with one new and unused recycling vehicle be awarded to Leota Automotive Services, Inc., in a net bid amount of one hundred and thirteen thousand four hundred and twenty dollars, which includes a trade-in of forty-five hundred dollars, subject to the issuance of a bond anticipation note.
Can I ask a question? Due to our economic hardships here in the city, why wouldn't we be looking possibly at the bid submitted by Tracy Road Equipment for a hundred and nine, four sixty-nine?
Doesn't meet the spec.
I can answer that, John. We reviewed the, well, the bid with respect to the public works committee specifications. We need a specific vehicle to carry out this program. The three bids that came in, two of the three did not meet that specific criteria, that being a twenty-five cubic yard vehicle. The other was a twenty-three, and I believe the other was a twenty. It did not meet our needs.
I believe that there's someone here from Tracy Road Equipment that would like to speak to the council.
I'm Jim Castell with Tracy Road Equipment, and I don't know where this packer doesn't meet the specs. I have the packer representative here in the back room that, it's a twenty-five yard The actual size of the packer is twenty-four point, twenty-five cubic yards. The reason it's not twenty-five is because of the vision of the packer. You've got two separate packer containers on this unit for the two parents. I looked at our competitors' information in D and H, literature. They weren't measured in cubic yards, they were only measured in metric. And to calculate the metric, you have to times it by one point three oh eight. And if you do that, their body is actually only twenty cubic yards. I hand that right here in their literature, so you can see it.
Yeah.
This is right here. It's a metric, it's six seventy-six, two. It's one point three eight escalation. There's cubic yards, they give a metric, fifteen point three, something there.
This is the vehicle you're offering? This pack more, I believe, Tim, was not automatic transmission? Did we call a particular exclusion while we ruled this one out?
The reason we excluded it was because Neil said that he ordered by all the specifications. We did not.
And it was the body size, as we had discussed in his office, so there might have been a miscalculation on the metrics. In all fairness, we should think of pulling this and looking at the information a lot more closer. We're certainly not out. We do want the best price. It did not meet specs, what we were told. If there's a miscalculation in the cubic yards, it certainly may meet our needs at a lower price. I would recommend to pull this at this time and look at it and get a second opinion. Certainly, we know what meets our needs, and if it does meet our needs at a lower price, we do want to look at it. We were just given some wrong advice.
Appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for bringing it to our attention.
In fairness to the low bidder, this is one example of why you need some type of engineering department to review these issues.
I'm sure we've had an.
And in fairness, may I please, in fairness to the low bidder, if he is correct, will he be awarded that contract?
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Is that, is that a statement of fact, or will this go out to public bid? Because if he was the apparent low bidder, he should be awarded the contract.
Well, at this time, we're going to take it back, but the city engineer was the one.
Will you, since we don't have a city engineer, will you be hiring an outside engineering firm to review this?
No.
Who's going to review it?
At this time.
It was our city engineer that made the recommendation, as it was.
But, but, but in the future, but in the, but, but in the future, okay, we're going to need somebody like a city engineer to review these things and put a P E stamp.
Excuse me, John. Before you leave, sir. Excuse me, John. I didn't mean to, but they were walking out today. Go ahead.
No, I just wanted to, you know, bring reference to that point.
In all fairness, it just, it does also go to prove that no one's ever one hundred percent correct.
Our specification was twenty-five cubic yard capacity, compacting capacity. Does your vehicle do that?
The specification's called for 1,000 cubic yards, actually 1,000 pounds, fraction of cubic yard. Our vehicle does that. Our vehicle is actually bigger than the competition, like I said, cubic yard was about 24.25 cubic yards.
Split, is that?
It actually metal split.
Yeah, I don't know how to make a rule, equation. Sixty, forty, seventy, thirty, what is it? Sixty, forty. We were informed that your compacting ability was 23 cubic yards. That's why we recognized the other bid. Now, you're saying that you can't compact 25 cubic yards?
1,000 pounds, it's a workout, 24, 25.
A thousand.
Yes, sir.
We don't lose any with this question. I certainly think we can return it to committee once again.
We certainly can. Thank you.
Can I ask a question? No, we're going to bring this back to the committee. Why don't we come back to the council for a vote?
Quickly, I assume, John. We're losing valuable time. The delivery of these vehicles, what is your delivery date? How many days? That was also a question in our minds. The delivery of this vehicle, we're set to begin September 5th, and we're hung up on specifications here. We will bring this back, it's quite a special meeting that we need.
Yes, we need it as fast as we can.
As a practical matter, what are your delivery times running? I know what the specification said, but as a practical matter, what are your...
120, 130.
Just going to write that down, Jim.
Can we set a meeting at this time while we're all here together?
I would agree to meet right afterwards, please.
Okay.
Agreed.
Pardon? Well, we have to discuss it, but we also will have to look into some of the other...
No, no. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Resolved that the $5 charge for white good pickup is hereby eliminated effective Monday, August 8, 1994.
I'll move it.
Sir?
I'd like to give a little explanation for that. The reason we're doing that is, number one, to get the blight out of our neighborhoods. As you drive around, you will see refrigerated stores on porches and backyards, dishwashers, et cetera. We did not make much. I think it was a matter of between $300 and $400 a year, and at the expense of trying to make the city look nicer. And the thing that we do make money off of this delivery, there will be a once-a-month pickup of these goods. If you have the good, you will call the city clerk's office, and he will set a date for the pickup once a month. And this will be effective, I think Joe talked, Monday?
Yes.
August, what was it for the... August 8th.
And the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
Resolved that Daniel Vaughn resigning at Levin Holly Lane, Liverpool, New York...
He didn't interrupt. What became of item five?
We passed...
We never did vote on the ban.
Yes, we did.
We voted to amend, you're right, John.
We had a roll call, vote to amend to two-hundred-and-sixty-two five hundred, it was carried during the...
To amend it?
Now we have to vote on the...
Now we have to vote?
On the ban. On the total package.
They have to vote on the amendment.
Resolution authorizing the issuance of $262,500 serial bonds to City Fulton, pay for part of the cost of various capital projects in the City Fulton.
Someone want to walk to that?
I'll move it. I'll second. For discussion, I wish the council would indulge in me just a second here. I have had several thoughts over this matter past week or so. I had to collect them on paper, so I'm going to have to read from my notes. The council will stand by with me. A week ago, we abolished the position of city engineer because the resolution said it would save the city approximately $60,000. It was a move that was dictated by economic hard times. Incredibly, we're back here just seven days later, looking to spend an amended amount now of about $212,000, with projects offered as capital improvements. Of these expenditures, over $88,000 are almost twice the salary of the city engineer, are being disguised as capital improvements. $35,000 for the construction of a boat launch at Indian Point, $6,000 for the initial phase of a pathway along the river, $31,000 for the reconstruction of North Bay Campground, after we've already committed over $50,000 to this project this year, and $16,500 for scuba gear, despite the fact that there has been and continues to be volunteer service available to the city. In previous weeks, we spent over $50,000 for a computer contract, $17,000 for an amnesty week that was undeclared by the council, $24,000 for a management by objective project for department heads, if we have any left that could benefit from this program. Last week, there was economic hard times. This week, we go on a shopping spree. Who will lose their job next to pay for any future shopping sprees? Yesterday's Oswego Valley News quoted the mayor as saying the common council looked at eliminating four jobs at the DPW to save the equal of the city engineer. I bristled at that statement, because there has been no formal discussion or private discussion that I'm aware of among the council about eliminating four jobs in the DPW. If there has, I certainly have not been privy to these discussions. If there hasn't, someone is acting independently here, maybe misrepresenting this council. Some items in this capital plan are unavoidable. The expenditure of the garbage recycling truck is one that can be supported. After all, when the public works committee put the garbage plan together, it effectively eliminated well over $300,000 for the '95 general budget, money that would not have to be levied against the taxpayer to provide garbage service. Therefore, the alleged million-dollar deficit the city has experienced was reduced by almost a third with the passage of the garbage ordinance two months ago, yet we're still quoting million-dollar deficits. Why? Unfortunately, after all the long hours I have personally contributed to this public works project, I now find myself in a peculiar position. I'm not able to support the expenditure for the vehicle listed in this proposal, because it has become conveniently lumped into what I call a pork barrel that I will not swallow. When this council first formed, we worked together because we were driven by a common goal, to reduce the city's expenses and the tax burden on its people. We took the unpopular road of instituting user fees for garbage, for recreation. Some of us, myself included, absorbed a considerable amount of ridicule over the user fee approach, but we did this because we were able to separate out and identify which were the essential services the city needed to provide at this juncture, given an alleged budget deficit of $1 million. Garbage pickup and recreation were not essential services then. In fact, state laws say that police fire and sanitation are the essential services a city needed to provide. What is essential in tonight's capital plan that requires us to spend hundreds of thousands? The garbage truck, yes, because the actual payment will be made by user fee collection, not tax dollars. But is it fair to spend tax dollars at this point for a boat launch, a walkway, a campground, or scuba gear, when just six months ago, the taxpayer had our attention, and we would never have considered such a move? I ask my colleagues to concern themselves with this capital plan tonight and make the proper decision for your respective constituents. Send this proposal back until each individual item listed herein can return when it answers a simple question: Is it fair to our taxpayers during this economic hardship to spend for non-essential projects? Thank you. Thank you.
I'll address some of that. As I said last week, most of these, if not all, except the reconstruction of water wells, was previously approved by the council as action to take. The only thing we didn't approve is the means of financing it. I talked to Jim LaBota, the city chairman, this afternoon. He said he wished that he had put these all on a separate line, because it would have been a lot easier for you to go through each one of them. But each one of them is something that we've already approved, and it's just a matter of the issuance of the bonds for future payment. The backhoe has already been purchased. The apparatus for the fire department was approved. Canal Park Walkway was approved. I'm not sure on the North Bay Campground, whether that's additional monies or part of... That's not additional monies. That's part of the money that we budgeted. It was budgeted in the 1994 budget. I think these things are positive things. I think they're things we need. I think they're things that we need. We don't necessarily have to look at specific capital project items and say, is this something that's absolutely necessary? I think Indian Point, the development at Indian Point, as you come into the city of Fulton, is a plus. People will look at it, where this development is, here's a good place to camp, here's a good place to fish, and to launch a boat. The same thing with North Bay Campground. The improvements over there are all positive things. The purchase of apparatus for the fire department is an absolute necessity. Unfortunately, we have just had an incident where, once again, the firemen were called into service, with equipment that is not in the best condition. So I think we're thinking of what we feel, or what I feel, is best for the city, and that's why I'm in favor of these projects. And once again, it's the financing of these projects. This money will not necessarily be spent, it'll be spent over a period of time. It's not something that we're spending within a short period of time.
Just to touch on or debate just a little bit of that, Bob, I don't believe much of this spending here was voted on by this council. Application for I.T. was done by prior administration. The point here is, we do not here tonight have to spend money if we are in fact declaring we have economic hard times. How do you eliminate jobs and then put in a boat launch? That's the point. With regard to scuba gear, once again, a tragedy happened on the waterway, but once again, volunteers were there to do the necessary work.
The problem is not the people doing the work, the people... The problem is the equipment, in order for them to go into the water safely.
I had something to add, too, Bob. I have a copy of a resolution on that waterfront or I.T. project, which was passed in September of '93, so that commitment was already made. And I'm not trying to pass the buck on that, I frankly think it's a good idea, but that commitment was made in '93.
Exactly, John. Commitment to make application, but we here tonight do not have to accept and spend money.
That's correct.
Okay.
May I ask, the city attorney, would that jeopardize any future chances for federal law once we make a commitment, once we go forward, once CDA is ready to go? I mean, what burden do we carry as a commitment from another council?
Well, I think as a practical matter, there's a lot of work that goes in these applications, both at our level and at the state, federal level, and if you're going to start approving projects and then declining projects, you're not going to get favorable treatment at those other levels of government.
I agree with that.
I don't know if that's the law or whatever, but as a practical matter, they're just not going to deal with it. There's every municipality in the state and the country are looking for these grants.
Please call a roll.
First ward?
No.
Second ward?
No.
Third ward?
Yes.
Fourth ward?
Yes.
Fifth ward?
Yes.
Sixth ward?
Yes.
Motion is carried.
Whereas Daniel Vaughn, residing at Levin Holly Lane, Liverpool, New York, is hereby appointed as chief code enforcement officer of the city Fulton, set appointment to be on a provisional basis for the purpose of civil service law. Be further resolved that pending further resolution, local law ordinance, or other legislation, said that Daniel Vaughn shall have the authority to act in the capacity of the building inspector, zoning inspector, and building official. And it is further resolved that the municipal civil service commission shall proceed with certification of position as required by Section 22 of the Civil Service Law.
I want to talk about this particular issue. Y'all have time to speak. I don't like any better than anyone in this room, the fact that the city had to eliminate a job. I also don't like any better than anyone in this room, that this city has dozens and dozens and dozens of substandard conditions in housing. Since May 19th, when we were first able to start tracking our work requests, we have had reported to us between May 19th and today, 119 zoning and ordinance violations. We can't even begin to count them manually, the paper requests that are in the file. The council has a window of opportunity to hire a person acknowledged to be across the state of New York, an expert in this business. I guarantee you, there has never been, and I emphasize, never been, an employee hired in this city that has undergone the personal background checks of Mr. Vaughn. Mr. Vaughn took over the Syracuse Housing Code Enforcement Department when it was in shambles, when people were being indicted. Many of you might remember, under the Alexander administration, these housing code enforcement officials were photographed on the golf course, they were caught with golf clubs in the trunk of their car, and they were everywhere but on the job. He built that department from a $50,000 a year income department to a $750,000 a year income department, because his philosophy is that code and code enforcement should and can become self-sufficient. There are people on this council that have done some personal background checks in addition to the background checks that we have completed. An official, officer of the Fulton Fire Department, happened to be talking to the deputy chief in the Oswego Fire Department today. The deputy chief in Oswego is Oswego's training officer, and is known as one of the best training officers in the area. Deputy chief in Oswego is quoted as saying, "Fulton is lucky to have grabbed Dan Vaughn. He did an outstanding job in Syracuse. He was number one on our list, but he got away." Our code man makes between $42,000 and $43,000 a year. This comes from Dan Vaughn's peers. One of our code enforcement people currently is out of work, plain out of work. He was knocked off a bicycle and lost his whole shoulder. He hit a dog on a bicycle. We have no one in this city that is currently authorized... We have no one in this city that is currently authorized to sign certificates of occupancy. Our code efforts have been fragmented. They lack follow-through, and every alderman at this table knows that the delivery of an effective code enforcement system needed help. In one ward, the first ward, we had an occasion to send the D P W to remove three thousand eight hundred and eighty pounds of garbage from a house. Recently, in that same ward, we had to send the D P W to remove between eight and nine thousand pounds of trash and garbage from a property. When I ran for office, I said, "Slum lords will be treated like outlaws in this administration." People elected my platform to carry out that commitment. With the people that we have, we're doing the very best we can. We have a plan, and the council has prioritized code enforcement as a very high priority item. And I'm certainly pleased this evening that they're standing here, ready to take a stand
In regards to that, I think the mayor's aware of this. The city of Syracuse, as well as Dan Vaughn, was instrumental in helping the city of Fulton with their heating and air conditioning licensing requirement, which you people passed. I think in fairness to what goes on in the city of Syracuse as opposed to what goes on in the city of Fulton can be addressed in one simple word: fines. You violate a code in the city of Syracuse, you pay a fine, and you pay a heavy fine. Of these one hundred and nineteen violations that you've stated, of those, how many of those have related to actually charging fines and what were the fines collected? Because I don't care who you appoint as a code enforcement officer, if you do not enforce the codes by addressing fines, you could have a thousand code enforcement officers. But if through your judicial system, you let these people off with slap on the wrist or allow these issues to keep progressing to the point where, well, we'll give you an extension, we'll give you another extension, or give them a twenty-dollar fine, then you are not addressing the problem. My concern here is not with the issue of codes. Everybody's well aware of the fact that codes lend themselves to public safety. That's the whole point for having codes in the first place. Also, they help you clean up your city because it obviously is not publicly safe to have two tons of garbage in your backyard. But the point is, unless this city is willing to pass some non-judgmental fines, unless this city is willing to state this is the actual fine for this offense and take it out of the judiciary, then you have not addressed your code enforcement problems. Thank you.
Thank you. We're working in that direction.
I'd just like to echo Joe's thoughts. It really doesn't matter who's writing the appearance ticket. I think the enforcement needs to be done in court. And I'd like to know, maybe Jerry or somebody here has available, what percentage of the code violation appearance tickets have been enforced by the court and what percentage of the respective judgments and/or fines have been collected? If you have, say, ten.
I have no information.
Would you be able to get it? Would you be able to get it?
Sure we could, but I don't have memory.
Who would I ask for?
Could ask the court. The court.
My best guess, it would be on the very low end. Yes.
How is a different person writing appearance ticket? How is a different person who's going to write appearance tickets increase the percentage of collection?
Well, right now, we don't have people writing appearance tickets. I mean, our code enforcement people writing it. Obviously, we need help with this. There's no dispute with that. We don't know how to solve this problem. That's my frustration as an alderman. Yes, we all know there's a weakness in the court. I am totally outspoken about that. There is probably a low, below fifty percent collection of fines. It's a twofold problem, and this community has to work very hard at both points. We need direction in code enforcement, and we certainly need some strong leadership in the court. We're willing to work on both of them. It's definitely a two-pronged problem.
What happened to Mr. Lund? Will he retain his job?
Mr. Lund will.
Will he retain his job?
He'll be back and healthy and doing his job.
Hopefully, he'll be back in a reasonable amount of time.
My name is Donald Walsh. I live at fifty-one East Tenth Street. I'm listening again about zoning ordinances and everything else. And I've been entangled with this zoning ordinance for quite a number of years, and I know what the council has to go through, and I hope some of these other people that don't understand what it gets involved in so that we could get something done in this city. Everybody on this council has worked for zoning ordinances. They get them and they're put down. The city attorney can tell you that. It goes one place and stops, and there's got to be a way to get around that. And I hope maybe that hiring this zoning officer will do the thing. I've lived in Fulton all my life, and I have asked every way I could to get this city straightened around and look like a city. And I hope some of these people in this audience will look the same way so that we can get something done.
I'd like to respond to that. There's no question about it that this council is interested in improving the situation in the city. We have passed eleven local laws since we've been in office. The majority of those have been the kind of laws that put more of a responsibility on the homeowner by requiring them and making them more responsible. We're going to continue to work in those areas. And one of the areas that we're certainly looking at right now, as we have right from day one, is the code enforcement officer. Dan Vaughn, as the mayor has said, comes to us with a tremendous amount of credentials. He was the director of code enforcement in the city of Syracuse for seven years. He also was a city of Syracuse Fire Department firefighter for ten years. He formed his own construction companies. He served as technical advisor, the director of technical services. So his credentials are impressive, and we're impressed with him.
Your resolution mentions something. Is Mr. Vaughn, has he passed the civil service test, or is that -- you said something about he has to have a waiting period or something?
No.
What was that? I didn't understand. It's just a question. I didn't understand that.
Anytime you create a job within a city, unless it's considered exempt, you have to have what's called a certification.
But he certified in the city of Syracuse anyways, and heck, that's.
Well, let me.
Okay, thank you.
Each municipality conducts its own certification. Certification is done by the local civil service commission, which consists of three people. They, in effect, draw all the special job search. Okay? That's what they're doing. Now, that could be completely different than the one in Syracuse. He has certain state certifications which qualify him to be inspector. That is part of the requirements to be the local certification.
So could you explain to us, Mr. Vaughn will be in charge of all building and coding and code enforcement issues, and then the fire department and the plumbing department and your other issues will report under him? Is that the level of command you're looking for?
Or code.
Right. I mean, but that is the level of command you're looking for. Thank you.
Well, as long as I'm not out of order, I'd like to say something. I'm certainly not going to debate the credibility of Dan Vaughn. In his field, he's a jewel, as I am told. But I'm wondering what the urgency tonight is to make this appointment because my concerns are not with a bureau chief. My concerns are with the legislation of a creation of a bureau department, code department in itself. We've only had one formal discussion on this matter. Since the draft has been presented, we have not had any formal discussion. There's a few points I'd like to cover. I recognize the city has many problems with absentee landlords and code enforcement and the lack thereof. But the problem is not unique to the city of Fulton. Every community throughout the United States suffers from this dilemma. It's desirable to have good code enforcement, but I'm wondering now at what cost? At what cost before it becomes a detriment to the city? The legislation I have read gives the appointee broad powers to do many things while reporting only to the mayor. The legislation indicates that the five inspector positions will be created under the bureau chief. Will this drive up the cost of code enforcement? I don't know. I'm questioning. The legislation makes use of the fire department and/or the police department, possibly requiring those individuals to attend city court, which translates into overtime costs and an even larger burden upon the taxpayer. The legislation also requires the bureau chief to perform all the duties of the city engineer, except those duties which require licensing capabilities. But it does not ask for specific engineering certification, so I'm wondering why that is not listed in the job requirement. This legislation is absent one major item, a specially created housing slash code court that would make this program, as it was presented to us, work. Without it, we're right back to where we are, as indicated by some individuals who spoke tonight. As I review the legislation, it simply provides the same penalty and punishment in the form which currently exists today. I remind the council, we all know that won't work. In one meeting the council had regarding new legislation, every council member to a person identified the single problem we have with code enforcement. It's the judicial system. We all know it. Bringing violators to court and extracting punishment is the only way to cure the problem we have. Bruce Brace Talents and Steve Lund both have told me they have no problem issuing tickets. It's making the violators answerable in court. When the new proposal was presented to this council, the hook, if you will, was that a special hearing court was going to be set up that could circumvent the court and obtain convictions. It was not only going to put enforcement back into code enforcement, but the city was going to realize considerable dollars to more than pay for this new enforcement plan. In a memo from Mr. Marbeto last week, the establishment of such a housing slash code court in the city of Fulton would take an act of state legislation. That will take years. In his memo, Mark Blostein, the first deputy counsel of the state unified court system, states that no city outside of New York City has a separate housing court. He recommends that the city of Fulton consult with the administrative judge for the fifth judicial district before even considering legislation. In view of this vital information given to us by Mr. Blostein, I don't understand why we are proceeding further without further discussion regarding code enforcement. With the issue of appointing a bureau chief is a secondary concern. The question I have is, during economic hard times once again, why are we spending on a whim? I believe this proposal should be directed back to a committee for a feasibility study before all members of council can feel comfortable ruling on this issue. Thank you.
These are just comments so that the public understands my feelings and that the council gets understanding. I'm Anthony Garia. I'm a city employee. I work for the fire department. I'm the assistant fire chief. Back early in the year, I think the fire department has demonstrated an interest in supervising the operations of code enforcement for the city. There may have been some misunderstandings in newspaper articles in the past few months. I'm not sure. This demonstration came to a point that sometime in May, there was a proposed local law restructuring the code enforcement for the city. And I believe that there was a date set for a public hearing which was eventually canceled. Our interest, if the structure had gone through, wouldn't have generated, I can't see any extra cost. If it did, it would have been very minimal. The idea coming across would have been none. I have a question. None of you, any questions that I have don't need to be answered, okay? The actual cost for the new position that you're considering, I have a question about that. The city engineer has been eliminated, and I was under the impression that this was done to save money. So this gets back to what Mr. Tumidji is talking about. If it was done to save money, then you're going to be using it for a new position, so you're actually not going to have, you're not going to realize much of the savings. If it wasn't being done to save money, well, let me rephrase it. You could have kept the city engineer and still had the fire department supervise code enforcement, kept the man working, and not had any additional cost. So if you're looking to actually save the cost of the city engineer, to realize that savings, I would think that you would look for a way to do the code enforcement without any additional cost in the city, which brings me back to the interest of the fire department. Someone else mentioned, what's your name, Joe? He mentioned public safety. I have that in my notes, too. Under the scope of public safety, code enforcement fits very well with public safety. He mentioned beautification. Code enforcement is not beautification of your city. It's enacting or enforcing state laws to provide public safety. Fire department is a public safety division of city government, as it should be. I think Mr. Tumidji mentioned that fire department, police department, sanitation is an essential service for a city. Is that correct? So therefore, the fire department should be involved in matters of public safety. There would be matters of hazardous material incidents, water rescue. Are there any other kind of rescue situations, whether it be motor vehicles, problems with collapses, or whatever else it might be? Fire suppression, fire prevention, public education, and code enforcement. My view of code enforcement is actually, code enforcement is the first step in fire prevention. If you have good code enforcement, you have beginnings of good fire prevention. If the city's got a good fire prevention program, then you're going to have less fires to suppress, so we can be about doing the other business of public safety that we should be doing, concentrating on public safety, public education with the young people, the senior citizens, and fire prevention. I think that if it's an economic problem in the city, there may be a way to do it that doesn't offer much expense. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Somebody want to move that resolution?
I'll move it.
Second?
Second? Bob?
Yes.
First ward.
No.
Second ward.
My vote is not against the individual. He is very credible. My vote is against the future legislation in this ties herein. No.
Third ward.
My vote is yes, and I think that this time we needed administrator, and I think that Dan Vaughn is that person.
Fourth ward.
I concur, yes.
Fifth ward.
Yes, and I'd like to make a comment. I don't know if the pretty statement is meant to a certain individual. I certainly would love a city to be quaint and pretty, but I've seen horror stories, safety stories. I've seen people living in cockroaches. I've seen people living with slivers in their feet. I've seen people who shouldn't be living where they're living. I've seen landlords that don't take care of their property. Pretty is an insult. I see people that need safe housing. I look to Dan Vaughn for guidance in every facet of this, in the bureau code enforcement. And I look for a man with experience. I admit that I need help as an alderman in code enforcement. I believe it is the need of the fifth ward. I believe it is the need of the majority of the people in the city, and I'm proud. I believe it is the need of the majority of the people in the city, and I'm proud to vote yes to this.
And I vote yes.
Motion's carried.
I may add one more thing to this. I have no problems with Dan Vaughn and his ability to be a good code enforcement director. What I do have a problem with is not advertising for the position in a newspaper or something like that. You know, I think that that's very important. You know, you oftentimes see municipalities advertise for positions in the newspaper. One night at a common council meeting here, Jim turned towards me and said, "Who's the fellow in the back?" And I said, "I don't know." And all of a sudden, we went into executive session and met Dan Vaughn. We weren't supposed to go into executive session. It wasn't listed on our agenda. We just are driven to go into executive session. I don't like things being added on the agenda the night of a meeting and/or a few hours or a couple of days before. After the agenda is passed out, a pre-agenda on Friday, and it's mailed and delivered to us either by the post office or the police department, I would not like to see anything added to the agenda prior to the meeting. You know, I think that's very important.
I'd like to comment again.
And it's something that we've gotten away from, because Dan, at a meeting that we had at Jerry's office in December of last year, you said that everything beyond the agenda would be passed out to you on Friday, and there would be nothing added prior to the meeting. And that was something that we were all going to strive for, and it's something that hasn't happened here in the last several meetings.
I think there was a policy agreed upon by the entire council.
I think that's something that we all would desire, but as everybody knows, things come up that need our attention. They're not always there. The agenda is printed, I think, on Wednesday or Thursday in order for us to get it on Friday so that we can review it. So at different times, there's, it's an absolute necessity in order to get something before the council that that's added to the agenda.
Pajaro.
As soon as we find out about additions, we try to get to the council people and tell them there's going to be some additions. Also, I think I'd like to remind Mr. Lincoln that I think the past administrations were famous for having a pre-agenda with about three items on it, and then they would show up that night and have about 20 items. So I don't think this is something, and we certainly, that was our intentions when we first started out, that we would try to get the agenda as controlled as possible. But I think at different times, things come up that are just need to be added. And if we're not meeting for another two weeks, when do we have time to pass something that might need to be passed within that timeframe?
And I'd like to say something I do agree with Bob. I think that should be the normal practice, but as I recall, it was at our request to the mayor that we meet with Dan Vaughn. I asked some other aldermen, and I think it's, as far as I know, the aldermen knew that he was coming in that night to executive session.
I had no idea.
Well, I am curious to that, because it was at our request in an executive session that the next time, could you please, soon as possible, bring him to them?
I think it was raised as soon as possible.
That's right. But it's to make it sound like Dan Vaughn was a total surprise. You might not have known who he was sitting in the audience. That's fair. But to make it sound like we pounced this upon you, I think is just an overstatement. Excuse me if I'm taking it wrong, John, but that's how I feel.
Right. But alls I'm asking for is things that are going to be on the agenda, and apparently you knew he was coming. Why wasn't it on the agenda? That's all I'm asking for.
But it was at our request, and it was a personnel matter, which is exactly what that is, is a personnel matter.
It wasn't on our pre-agenda, and that's the only thing I'm commenting on. You know, I just wish the...
John, if I may interject, there is a good point you are stating here. We, as a common council, established policy to a person. The pre-agenda is the agenda, except for emergency situations.
That's right.
The abolishment of a position is not an emergency situation. The discussion of appointing a person is not an emergency situation. That is what John is addressing. If you are privileged to know, each and every one of us is privileged to know what is on the agenda. When I walked in Tuesday night, I laid eyes, as I said earlier, for the first time on the resolution abolishing a position. Inside the resolution was words to the effect that positions in the plural will be abolished. They have been analyzed by members of the common council. If anybody here sat down and analyzed positions to be abolished, please tell me.
That's right.
And maybe just to add this point, Bob, maybe that's why I'm a little hesitant in doing things the way the old council did, and wanting things to be out in the open and on pre-aggendance and different things like that. I just think it's very important.
Well, I think, well, you know, in the future, we'll try to do the best possible job we can to get all the items on the agenda, and if there's something that comes up that's considered by the mayor and by the council as something that's an emergency that needs to be dealt with and we'll deal with it. We'll also try to be more clear on what items will be discussed in executive session. But I think, as you know, personnel matter is something that, how far can you go with that?
But I guess just to add this one more thing.
Well, before you go, I just want to clarify what he's clarifying. The position that was being discussed, code enforcement, was not personnel. How can it be personnel? The gentleman does not work for this city. He's not personnel.
When you gave me a call over the weekend saying that Tony Scutary was going to retire from the fire department, you said that we were going to add something to the agenda for Tuesday's meeting, okay? And I said, "That's great. You know, I appreciate the call." And that's what a common council president should do, is to keep all the other councilmen informed or councilwomen informed of everything that's going on, okay? When I came in here to abolish a job at our last meeting, you know, I wasn't given that same courtesy. And apparently, you knew what was going to happen, or maybe I shouldn't say that, but I think that you were aware that the position was going to be abolished where I didn't. And I'm just a little offended that certain members of this council are privy to more information than I am, trying to represent my constituents and my work to the best of my ability, as well as the city of Fulton in general. Thank you.
I'll just, one more thing. I think some of those items are certainly discussed with all of us, not as to whether it's exactly clarified in a resolution form or whatever, but I think in most cases, all of us are aware of, at least in a discussion mode, of some of the things that we're thinking about.
Read the next resolution, please. Notation that the appointment by Mayor Bullard of Richard Nardozzi, 74 Patrick Circo, Fulton, New York, to the plumbing board to fill the unexpired term of Anthony Scutary effective immediately, expired December 31st, 1995, is hereby entered into the minutes of this meeting of August 2nd as matter of record.
And I'd like to just keep on talking. Dick Nardozzi has been in the plumbing business for 50 years. He ran for mayor in 1981 and '83. He's been a member of the zoning board. He's one of the outstanding, community-minded people, and I think this is a fine appointment.
I'll second that. Next resolution. Resolved that scheduled bills payable '65 through '69 of 1994, which has been previously approved by the common council auditing committee, are hereby approved. Want to move that?
Move it.
I'll second it for discussion. Jim, at the last meeting, you had requested to see these bills. Since we had a week between meetings, the audit was done on Monday. It's a rarity. It is always done on the second and fourth Tuesday, Thursday, I'm sorry, of the month. So they're opposite the council meetings. What we, we are willing to set up a time where if you want to understand our auditing process, what these numbers '65 through '69 mean, just for the general public, it's a grouping of bills. It's not four bills, because if it was just four bills, we would gladly list them. What it is, is every bill that the city plays, whether the time period between audits. I put a general printout on the file cabinet for you to read at any time. At any time you have a question on any of those bills, Jim will give you the bill itself. We get the bills and the printout. We've talked about some different issues. We've made a lot of changes that follow the procurement policy that have been, it's easier for the Chamberlain's office. It's given us a chance to keep a lot better track on the city's money. There's a new computer program that he can generate lots of different reports for you. Alls you do is have to request. In the meantime, if there's anything more specific, please be, feel free to call me. I did leave a message last night, but it was on a Monday, and the time wasn't good. Be glad to sit down. And I also extended John and Bob, because you're often not able to sit in, and we will show you all the changes that we've made. We feel it's a better program, but we would like your input also.
Keith?
Sure.
My question last week was not of you and the committee to do a good job.
Oh, sure.
I'm certain that you are doing a good job. My question is in the wording of the resolution, which is asking me to approve bills...
It's understandable.
...that have been paid.
I understand that, and I have no complaints, but alls we can do is give you the printout and show you every bill that we pay, and anyone in the public is always privy to that information at any time. They can just go down. Jim LaBota is wonderful to work with. Just wanted to clarify that. So I seconded that.
Motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Resolved that city chamberlain is hereby authorized and directed to transfer $1,250 from the A1990 contingent account to the library account to cover the cost of boiler repairs. This is a city building that we're required to, we've been put on notice by the boiler, by the state of New York Department of Labor, that we have a violation that's got to be corrected. You want to authorize it? I don't move it. Jim?
Second.
On the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Resolved that city clerk is hereby authorized and directed to advertise a notice to Fulton City residents regarding the garbage sticker phase off.
I'll move that.
I'll second it.
On the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Resolved that city chamberlain is hereby authorized and directed to transfer $100 from the contingent account to the 3610 accounting board account to cover the cost of the mailing of notices to the HVAC contractors. I'm with it. Who's going to do this mailing? Are you going to do it? Joe can answer that. Joe?
Probably getting sick of seeing me tonight. It's my understanding that Brace Talents will be responsible for that. The reason that we need $100 is to pay for stamps to mail out the licensing requirement in the city of Fulton. To date, we've already collected, I would say, well over 30 licenses at a cost of $100 per license, so this truly is not costing the city any funds.
Yeah, I didn't know if they were coming out of his office. We have a postage meter that we can use.
He, well, my understanding was that he was going to take care of that, and that was to transfer funds to his department in order to take care of that. That was my understanding.
Yeah, okay. I just saw the postage, and I thought, "We got a postage meter."
I think it had to do with the fact of budgeting concerns, trying to keep his mailing in his department, and that was the only reason it was done that way, Mr. Mayor.
No problem.
Thank you.
Okay. On the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Resolved that the common council hereby allocates $6,500 from the promotion of tourism account for the recommendation of the Fulton Tourism Council dated August 2nd, 1994. Mr. Ladd?
We're seeking a resolution for allocation for two more points in addition to appropriations that's listed here in this handout. I'll just say a word about background, so in case people don't know who we are. In 1992, Fulton Tourism Council adopted, with the common council's concurrence, bed tax guidelines as follows. One, to invest bed tax funds in projects that attract tourists, specifically tourists who will generate occupancy tax revenues and/or sales tax revenues. Two, require matching fund contributions to stretch the city's limited big tax funds. We had a meeting last week, and we had these, we're seeking a resolution, these two points. Fulton Festivals River Fest publicity, $6,000. Two, visitors' guide to shopping, dining, and accommodations, $500. Any questions?
Somebody want to offer that?
I'll move it.
Flip a coin. Second. On the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. I have one more issue I'd like to discuss with the council and the people here this evening, and I saw somebody raise their hand. Go ahead.
Quick question. I heard Mr. Teramigi asked twice tonight and not be answered. Who was it that conducted the analytical review of the city positions to determine which was expendable?
Could you repeat the question, please?
Who conducted the analytical review of the city's positions to determine which were expendable and decided on Neil Beatty slash city engineer? Did you, Mr. Teramigi, did you not ask that question?
Yes, I did.
That was discussed among the entire council.
Mr. Teramigi and Mr. Lincoln, were you included in those discussions?
The entire council, no, I wasn't.
This council has... recent weeks received a great deal of criticism over computers, computer software, and the About five years ago, the city of Fulton spent somewhere around $5,000 or $7,000 for this particular piece of equipment. Never was taken out of the box, was never used. In order to make this piece of equipment compatible with the existing outdated computer system that we had, there would have been a charge imposed of some $2,000 or $3,000. As a result of the computer system that we put in first of the year, we are now ready, starting tomorrow, to read our water meters with this device. This is a pretty neat device, because an old-fashioned water meter, you punch the reading in, and it shows you the next house you go to, and it matches the meter number with the house that you're at. And if you've got in a house that the meter number doesn't match, you're in the wrong property. In addition, we now have somewhere between 500 and 600 meters installed in our system of the new variety. And when the meter reader comes to a house with the new variety of this meter, all he has to do is put this on the meter, and it transmits the meter number and the meter reading right into the computer. There also is a remote outside box located on the house, so in certain homes, the meter reader doesn't have to do anything more than plug this on here, and the meter's ready. The meter reader gets back to the office that evening, just plugs into the computer, and the entire route is downloaded into the computer. We presently have a girl that takes a card to keep and punches into the computer every meter reading every day, and the meter reader reads meters. This will free up one person to do other tasks at a minimum, plus it will eliminate a great deal of incorrect readings, incorrect... a great deal of incorrect readings, incorrect key punched meter readings. In May, the city, in January, pardon me, the city never had a system to keep track of its work requests. Now are online with a system for every work request that comes through our office. You know how many work requests are being done by departments, you know, when they're done, and the alderman who initiates the request gets a copy of this so that they know that the work is completed. That work request goes to the department. We have underway and ready for final draft, all of our budget planning for this year and next year. This is the final draft, it needs some corrections, everything will be graphed, everything will be discussed, everything will be shown, and we will have photocopies for the public. So I say to those people who have been our critics of what we've been doing, it takes a while to get from where you are to where it is you need to be, but we're approaching that point. Thank you. Is there anybody from the council that has any other business with this council? Entertaining motion to adjourn. On the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.